This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for January 18, 2021. In accordance with Social Distancing orders 2020-43 and 2020-44 and Section 7E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act and a determination by the Mayor of the City of Warrenville, this meeting will be held virtually. Persons wishing to provide public comment are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us by 5:00 PM the day of the meeting. Please make note that this meeting is being recorded. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Brummel.
Here.
Alderman Anderson. Alderman Ashauer.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Yeah.
Chrisell.
Here.
Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Treasurer Brenner.
Here.
City Attorney Brooke Lenaman.
Here.
City Administrator John Coakley.
Here.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White.
Here.
Police Chief Ray Rono.
Here.
Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand.
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzer.
Here.
Deputy Public Works Director Phil Kukler.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. We'll now say the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to say it along at home with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, of the Constitution.
This is the part of the meeting that we set aside for citizens' comments. We have one person here tonight that wishes to speak. Bob?
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. Six months ago, a representative from the City of Warrenville came to my residence to view the damages from flooding on the southern edge of my property. We then walked west on a prairie path to the Everton Development, viewing the flood damages to the trees along the south side of the prairie path. Most trees do not like wet feet, and when placed underwater for an extended period of time, will die. There are two 24-inch storm pipes under the prairie path at the southwest corner of the Everton Development and have been there for more than 50 years. The two 24-inch pipes are not fitted with the currently required safety features. The Everton Development Stormwater Plan states that the storm water will flow through the two 24-inch pipes, then south to Point Oak Drive, and then to the Ferry Creek. The only problem, after the storm water exits the pipes on the south side of the prairie path, it takes a 90-degree turn and heads east towards my property. Upon viewing these water movements, the City of Warrenville representative stated that DuPage County Stormwater Department in the City of Naperville would be contacted, and I would receive a call. In a few short months, we are again being the rainy season. Most of the Everton Development will be under roof, and there will be greater damages to the trees and the properties to the south of the prairie path.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else wish to speak who's here tonight? Would you like to speak? Okay, thank you. Do we have any emails? Is anyone on the line who'd wish to add to the meeting tonight in a positive way? All right, very good. We'll move on then. Thank you. That is the last opportunity for public comment tonight. To official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. Several things this evening. First of all, congratulations to Deborah Swindon from Community Development, who received the recognition of excellence award this year for her fine work in that department. If you've had any occasion to deal with Deborah, you know what a fine professional she is, helpful, friendly, and very competent. So Deborah, congratulations. It's a well-deserved award. You may have noticed, in the old part of town, the gas station cleanup at the Citgo Station has begun. Of course, it is a contaminated property, and for it to be of any value to the community going forward, we need to clean it up. That has commenced. There is no particular plan right now for any specific business or other opportunity on that property. Our intention is to clean it up to residential standard. About 40% of that property can be redeveloped with buildings. The rest of it would have to be redeveloped as open space, but that is as far as the planning is at this point. So if you're wondering if we do have some specific plans, not yet. We will see how that develops. The plan in place is to clean it up again to a high standard so that it's usable going forward from now on. Thirdly, today, of course, is Martin Luther King Day, the day that we honor his legacy. That's a very important thing, I think, for us to keep in mind. One of the things that struck me today was, tonight, we are populating our latest commission, the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission. And of course, it is our intention to use the principles that Dr. King brought forward for us to make Warrenville a better place through participation with that commission. So I'm very pleased for all the folks that came forward to volunteer beyond that commission. And of course, it's all of our hopes that we can take a good situation in our town and make it even better for people to feel like this is their home, feel like they're respected, feel like they're welcome here. So welcome aboard all of the volunteers to the new commission. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk? Thank you, Emily. Treasurer?
No report.
Thank you. We'll go through the Aldermen to give them an opportunity to make comments at this part of the meeting. We'll begin with Alderman Anderson.
Yeah, just echoing your comments, Mayor, on this day of service, I want to thank all of our citizens for the service that they give to our community, and certainly all those on this call that give so much time and effort for this community. So thank you all.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer?
Just a thank you to all the volunteers.
Thank you. Alderman Berry?
Thank you. I, as Martin Luther King said, I have a dream, and I have a dream too, that starting Wednesday, that everybody will feel and start to feel again to be equal, and that we'll all hopefully be able to get along and share our ideas and not be so divisive. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to second the comments that have so far been made. Also, I would like to thank Public Works in this time of snow. This is the beginning, I think, of our fourth week of snow on the ground, and I had a conversation today with someone and commented to me, I didn't ask the question, but commented to me how amazing it was to see the streets in our town and how quickly they are plowed compared to other areas. And I said, yep, that's what we're known for. So I would like to just publicly thank these Public Works folks that are out there doing their job. And it is very much appreciated by so many people. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
Thank you. Yes, happy Martin Luther King Day to all. As Martin Luther King himself said, "Everyone can be great because everyone can serve." I think that's a very appropriate sentiment today and a very appropriate sentiment among this group. So, you know, when you see somebody in need, please take action. That's all we really ask of each other as citizens and residents and members of our community. I also want to emphasize that tomorrow is the National COVID-19 Memorial. For those that we've lost, they're asking people at 4:30 Central Time to light a candle, or ring a bell, or have a moment of silence, whatever seems best to you. They're asking for cities to light up buildings if the city has time or if the staff is available to light up our buildings at 4:30 tomorrow. The idea is, we really want to make sure that every family, or friend, or community member who knows someone, or has someone who has been lost, knows that they have not been forgotten. Because this pandemic is a tragic and awful loss to our community and to all the people in the world. So I think taking a little bit of time tomorrow to remember that is very appropriate, and I'm going to be doing that, and I hope that you will join me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Chrisell?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Widener.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, on the day that we honor Dr. Martin Luther King's legacy and his dedication for the equal treatment of all people, it's appropriate and timely that on tonight's agenda, we include recommendations and approvals and appointments for several well-qualified individuals who will volunteer for the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Committee. And I say thank you to all of them for volunteering to serve on such an important and timely committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
No further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick note. I'm still trying to assess what the actual impact will be, but late this afternoon, I received about 30 different copies of the press release from the Illinois Department of Public Health that the region, in fact, all of the state has been moved, most of the state has been moved out of Tier 3 mitigations, which is good news. It's a good step. In fact, I just emailed the council earlier today just about, we needed to keep the trends going in this region to be able to achieve this. And the state has changed some of the process, so we have actually gotten there earlier. Are we moving to Tier 2? I sent a link out to the council. Everyone can go to the Illinois Department of Public Health, or even the DuPage County Department of, DuPage County Health Department, and look those things up if you're interested in what the details are. But it lessens the restrictions on our area some. There's still no indoor dining, but now they can have recreational classes and gyms can be a little bit more open. Some things, slightly larger gatherings. It's a step in the right direction. It's a very positive note, so that's good news. I will be working with staff to assess what that means for City Hall and City employees and our operations and even public meetings, and we'll share that information once it's known. I don't think there'll be big changes in Tier 2. We want to get back to Tier 1 when things open up a lot more, and hopefully we can get back to where our businesses are fully operating and help them, help the community, help the city. Thank you.
Thank you, John. CDA Attorney Lenaman?
No report. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. May I have a motion, please? Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the agenda for the January 18, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting.
Alderman Davalos, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any changes to that? Alderman Chrisell?
I'd like to remove 6E, please.
E?
E is in Edward, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else?
Alderman Anderson, I'd like to remove F.
And Alderman Anderson?
Item D is in David.
Okay, anyone else? We have three items removed from the consent agenda. Do the motioner and the seconder agree to those changes?
The motioner has no objections.
The seconder has no objections.
Very good. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, and the agenda has been approved as amended. We have two minutes that need approval also this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of January 4, 2021 City Council Regular Meeting, and to approve the minutes of the January 11, 2021 Community Development Committee Meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I have a correction to the minutes of January the 4th. I put in Tom's Market instead of Target, and Alderman Goodman's comments, and that will be changed. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So do the motioner and the seconder agree to that change, that minor change?
Motioner agrees.
Seconder agrees.
Very good. Any other comments or questions on the minutes? Seeing and hearing none. Emily, roll call, please.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. The minutes have been approved. We'll move on then to the consent agenda as amended for this evening. Item 6A, waive second reading and pass ordinance 0202-1-02, amending the Warrenville City Code regarding the appointment and removal of the Director of Public Works/ Superintendent of Streets. B, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and pass Resolution R2021-03, extending the duration of the March 16, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular, special, or emergency meeting of the City Council. C, accept Senior Civil Engineer Hockings' recommendation and pass Resolution R2021-04, approving the reduction of the Public Improvement Security Bond for the Lexington Trace Project. G, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and accept the proposal to amend the Warren Tavern FY 2021 funding to include the additional expense of $766 for foundation repair to the Warren Tavern. H, accept Community Development Committee recommendation and include the Illinois Prairie Path Founder's Memorial Display improvements in the city's trailhead project and direct staff to work with the city attorney to draft a 50% cost-sharing agreement between the city and the Illinois Prairie Path Not-for-Profit Corporation for the design and construction of those improvements. I, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Amy Chrisell to fill the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission vacancy for a term expiring April 30, 2024. J, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Carrie Leonard to fill the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission vacancy for a term expiring April 30, 2022. K, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Elizabeth Dudak to fill the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission vacancy for a term expiring April 30, 2024. L, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Mike Jarmus to fill the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission vacancy for a term expiring April 30, 2023. M, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Sarah Phelan to fill the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission vacancy for a term expiring April 30, 2023. N, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Jimmy Ray to fill the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission vacancy for a term expiring April 30, 2024. O, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Christina Via to fill the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission vacancy for a term expiring April 30, 2022. P, accept Mayor Brummel's recommendation and approve the appointment of Elizabeth Dudak as Chairman of the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission for a term expiring April 30, 2022. Q, receiving file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission meeting held on November 12, 2020. R, receiving file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission meeting held on November 24, 2020. S, receiving file minutes of the Plan, Commission, and Zoning Board of Appeals meeting held on January 7, 2021. T, receive and file reported invoices paid up to January 13, 2021 in the amount of $136,706.70. U, authorize expenditures for invoices due honor before February 1, 2021, in the amount of $189,903.28. And V, receive and file report of the master debit card expenditures for the month of December 20, December 2020 in the amount of $5,389.16. May I have a roll call, please?
Need a motion?
Oh.
Alderman Widener moves to approve the agenda as amended by Mayor David Brummel.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Now we'll have the roll call.
Thank you. Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. The consent agenda as amended has been approved. We will now return to the items that were removed from the consent agenda. We're going back to item 6D. Alderman Anderson, did you wish to bring that forward, or did you wish someone else to?
Someone else to?
Okay. Would someone like to make that motion then for 6D, please?
Alderman Widener moves to accept Senior Civil Engineer Hockings' recommendation and pass Resolution R2021-05, approving the reimbursement and indemnification agreement for the Summer Lakes HOA's stormwater detention and stabilization project.
Second, Alderman Goodman.
A motion, second. Then we'll move on to discussion. Alderman Anderson, did you wish to comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So I've had a chance to review the minutes from the November 9 Community Development Committee, the whole, where this was discussed. This was prior to my coming on. So I respect the fact that I'm a little bit further behind than everybody else here on the council, and I really appreciate Economic Development Director Menzer and his help in answering my questions. So I just have two questions. A, I appreciate the Summer Lake Homeowners Association stepping up to this very large project. I understand it's their responsibility. At the same time, that's a lot. It's a lot of money, and I appreciate their stepping up to do the work they need to do. I respect the fact they requested the city permit fees be waived, which is fair to ask, but I understand that's just not something that we do. So my question comes in, it looks like we're looking to use our fees in lieu of detention funds to provide a contribution of $5,000. And my question is, is that $5,000, where did that value come from? Is it commensurate to the fee value that would have been waived if that's something we did, or was there some other basis for the $5,000? Just so I understand the precedent we're setting for when these requests come in the future, how do we determine what number we do? And then the second question is, the funds that we're drawing this from, is there any sense of how much is sitting in those funds? Is this a large fund, or does this exhaust that fund? Just to get some context.
Okay, very good. Well, I'll turn those questions to Community and Economic Development Director Menzer. Ron?
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. To answer the first question, the fee waiver request would have amounted somewhere in the neighborhood of $2,500 to $2,700, somewhere in that area. The $5,000 figure, I don't believe there's any direct rationale behind that. It's a relatively small amount of the overall percentage of the project. Then it seemed like, at least at the Community Development Committee meeting, the council generally felt that that was a reasonable amount in this case, given the context of the improvements that were being done and the somewhat regional benefits that the stormwater detention facility that runs through Summer Lakes provides to the community. In terms of the amount of funds that are on file, the city collected approximately $50,000 of fee in lieu of detention funds when the Walgreens project at the corner of Batavia and Route 59 was developed. So those funds have been on file since that point in time. We haven't found an opportunity to make use of those funds. When we dealt with Summer Lakes on this particular project, and they did ask for a fee waiver request, we immediately identified, from a staff perspective, that those funds were available, and the type of improvements that Summer Lakes is or has now probably completed on the detention facility, or exactly the types of things that those fees in lieu of detention funds can and should be used for, specifically projects that have an overall watershed benefit. So we have $50,000 on file. We're posing at this point in time to use $5,000 for this project. I can tell you that, at least from a staff perspective, we've had some preliminary conversations and feel that the, both internally and with DuPage County Stormwater Management folks, feel that the demolition and removal of the Citgo structure, gas station structures down at the corner of Batavia, or yeah, Batavia and River Road, would be an appropriate use of those funds also, because we'd be removing commercial gas station-related improvements and structures from the 100-year floodplain, which again, is an overall watershed benefit for the DuPage River corridor.
Did you run down to Alderman Anderson? Additional comments or questions?
I think that's very helpful. I think ideally, I'd love for, you know, as we come up with these numbers, that there be, if we can be principle-based, but at the same time, I respect the committees, their time and attention and their experience to warrant this to be the right amount, and commend the city for identifying a source for those funds. It sounds like it's a good use, and I support the motion.
Thank you, Alderman. We'll move then to the other Alderman for comments or questions on the item. Alderman Ashauer?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Berry?
No comment.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos?
No comment really, but I think that I appreciate the explanation that just occurred about this from Ron. It's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Goodman?
Yes, I agree with Alderman Anderson's concern about having a consistent policy on this sort of decision going forward. Given the many homeowners associations in our community, and given the large costs associated with stormwater drainage projects of this type, or smaller, or potentially even larger, I think it's going to be important for staff going forward to put together some sort of policy so that we can be consistent in granting this kind of relief going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Chrisell?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alderman Wilson?
No comments.
Thank you. Okay, everyone has been heard on this issue. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Lost everything.
Aye.
Alderman Chrisell?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
You still heard me.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Emily. We'll move on then to item 6E. Alderman Chrisell, did you wish to bring that forward or did you want someone else to make the motion?
I would appreciate if someone else were to make that motion, please.
Okay, would someone step up, please?
Alderman Davalos, I'd like to move to accept staff recommendation and authorize a 1% merit increase for full-time, non-union employees and a one-time $100 merit bonus for part-time, non-union employees as outlined in staff's January 13th, 2021 memorandum.
Second, Alderman Anderson.
Second by Alderman Anderson. Okay, back to you, Alderman Chrisell, for comments and questions.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I just, I want to start out, I just want to say so that everyone understands it, I'm, I'm not in any way saying that, that we don't appreciate our employees or feel that they shouldn't be compensated fairly. I just have a couple of concerns regarding this, this motion and this recommendation. One is that I don't feel that it represents all of our classifications of employees fairly. A large majority of our, of our union employees, based on contract negotiations back in March when we said, you know, that we were going to implement this kind of pay freeze with potential furlough days to be, you know, reevaluated in November, which is where we're, where this is coming from. I don't feel that we have allowed them the opportunity to, to get a, a merit increase in the same way. Also, you know, it, it's, it's kind of a perception thing too, you know, as a city, you know, we should, we should strive to treat all of our employees equally and give them the same opportunities when it comes to, to compensation for sure. And I would be able to support this recommendation if it, if it had the inclusion or the ability for all employees, including union contracts, to, to reevaluate this, this pay increase. So for that, I do not support this recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. We'll go through the other Alderman for comments or questions on this item. Also, moving on down the list, Alderman Widener first.
I have no questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson.
Well, there, we, we're treated differently when we have union members and non-union members, and some of those things that we contract for are negotiated, but I think this is a good faith effort from our start standpoint to at least recognize the work and the input from the non-union individuals. So I'm in favor of this recommendation.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Anderson.
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Alderman Ashauer.
The, I, I agree with the recommendation. It came from the same people who negotiate with the unions and they understand the, the value to all our employees and I appreciate their efforts.
Thank you. Alderman Berry.
Yes, I'm going to agree to this motion.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Davalos.
Yes, I'm going to agree also, but I would feel better if Assistant City Administrator White had any comments. I mean, there may not be comments, but if she had any comments on this when we're, when the Aldermen are finished, I would appreciate hearing those. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alderman Goodman?
I agree with Alderman Chrisell's concerns. I think that they're very well-founded concerns. I think that our current budget, as we are about to be updated at the end of the meeting, does create enough alarm bells that, you know, the possibility of staff cuts or not filling staff vacancies is severe enough that, that contemplating raises right now doesn't seem wise. I do think that the amount of volunteer, which I think is $11,000, is not a huge amount of money, although I do know that employment costs compound over time because you get raises on top of the raises based on what your salary was the previous year. So saying it's a small amount of money now doesn't mean it won't be a large amount of compensation over time. I'm inclined to agree with the motion, but I, I see all of the very valid concerns raised by my fellow Aldermen, and I agree with him in principle that raises are not a good idea right now.
Okay, thank you. Any additional comments from anyone who wishes to make another comment? Hearing none? They have a roll call, please, then? Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot about Christina. Assistant City Administrator White.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just wanted to provide some additional, I guess, context or background based on the, the conversations. I think Alderman Wilson brought up the unions and non-unions are not exactly a one-for-one comparison, but we do try to be consistently equitable between all of our employee groups. There isn't a merit structure traditionally with our union groups, with the exception of the local IBW Local Group for Public Works that has a merit bonus based on performance in their contracts, but that isn't necessarily standard across all three. So there are some slight differences there. I think staff is certainly in the same boat as what some of the council members stated about concerns about the fiscal condition and what's going on with the revenue losses. We continue to evaluate those things. It is not, it's, it's not something that we are taking lightly, but we also acknowledge and recognize that in, in local government, there's a lot of competition in terms of comparable communities and what compensation looks like and benefits look like across different communities, and that's something that we also have to keep aware of and apprised of as we make these decisions to make sure we don't lose step completely with what's going on in the market around us.
Thank you. City Administrator Coakley also.
Thank you. If I may, I want to just add on to what Christina was saying so that the public understands too. This, this was a decision, a recommendation, to make the recommendation was a decision on part of senior staff. We did what we promised to do, go back in November, as, as had been mentioned. We are certainly in a tough spot. This is a really hard call for us as well, and we appreciate all the comments again from all the Aldermen, because the city is in a difficult financial standing, but it's, the benchmarks that we set out and, and committed to watching in March and April have been not as bad. I, I will use an odd term, it's less bad than we thought it would be. But that doesn't mean you go out and give money away easily, but when you look at what's happening with our comparable communities and the information that's attached, many are mid-contract with their unions, so they're giving out non-union increases as if it was any other year. I'm, I, I'm happy for them, I'm not sure how they're making that work. We have, and this is for the current year, but only from November 1st on, so this is as if we were doing a raise for the current fiscal year, it starts in May, but only for half the year, to make that clear. I want to also make sure everybody understands the senior staff unanimously discussed and determined before we even put this together that we would not be included in this increase. It just, we're doing fine. Our other employees though, that are not a union and not in senior staff department heads, or the Assistant City Administrator or the City Administrator, are doing a heck of a job like everybody else, everybody else, not just the city, wherever you work, trying to get through this whole pandemic, and we're trying to appreciate that in a, as cost-effective ways we can, but fully realizing the city's compensation plan as it's laid out, and I'm assuming will, will continue when things get better, they will, is going to cost more because we will have to catch up, based on the standards we use that are comparable. So just a little more explanation of there, this wasn't in any way, and I don't think anyone on the council or the city assumes, it was just kind of randomly or haphazardly decided upon it. It was a lot of struggle and exactly the conversation you're all having, we went through that. I'm, I'm working the finance director very hard to try to figure out how we're going to present the balanced budget for next year. This year is wrapping up quickly, so we're extremely cognizant of that and will be facing all these issues again. But I wanted to fill in some more of that information and also assure everyone that people recommending this from the staff are not included in it. I think that is, is, it is fair for our other employees and, and a sign of, if nothing else, the appreciation for all they've had to go through and, and trying to keep them up with some of the union folks and all of our neighboring communities where they know people who work too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Any additional comments from the Aldermen? Okay, thank you both, John and Christina. Now, roll call.
Alderman Chrisell.
Nay.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. Motion carries. We'll move on then to item 6F. Alderman Goodman, did you wish to bring that forward or would you prefer someone else to make the motion?
I do not want to bring it forward.
Okay, now you have someone else volunteer to make the motion then, please?
Alderman Davalos, I would, I move to accept Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals recommendations and direct the city attorney to prepare ordinances approving a special use permit for an open sales lot and parking variations at 28W 265 Warrenville Road.
Second, Alderman.
Second by Alderman Ashauer. We have a motion and a second. I will go to discussion, beginning with Alderman Goodman.
Thank you. I certainly am in favor of this project. I removed this at the instigation of PCZBA member Miller, who raised his concerns about the angled parking along Warrenville Road in front of the building. I believe he sent an email today to the whole council describing the safety issues that he thought we should consider and approving those four angled spaces in an area with a raised curb where two parallel parking spaces are at present. I think everybody here is familiar with this property, but may not have ever tried to park on the lot, and since the PCZBA minutes that we've approved state clearly that staff is not opposed to replacing the four angled spots with two parallel spaces and changing the total number here to 18, I think we should consider Commissioner Miller's recommendation. In the minutes, it quotes Director Menser as saying that the city wouldn't support a curb cut in such a location as it would be unsafe. So I think putting four angled parking spaces in that location would therefore be unsafe, whether there's a curb cut or not, for those cars to pull into those spaces over the raised curb and the sidewalk and a very small amount of grass. I don't see from the diagrams here how anyone could possibly get into those spaces without driving up over the raised curb or across the grass in front of the sidewalk. I don't think there is much grass there, and I think the Plan Commission had recommended putting in some sort of a planter also right at that corner, also right where people would need to be turning their cars in to get into the angled spaces. So whatever vegetation that would be, I think would have a hard time surviving with cars pulling over the curb. So I guess my question for Director Menser is, do you have any objection if we change this to 18 spaces? It says in the minutes that you didn't object to that, so why, why shouldn't we make that change to make it a safer parking situation?
Thank you, Alderman. Director Menser?
To answer your question, no, I did state, I, I do not have objection if the, the parking variance was reduced down to 18 onsite in spaces. From a practical perspective, what I shared at the meeting is that I don't recall seeing anybody parking in an angled form at that location. I have seen people park on a regular basis in a parallel situation, so I, I wouldn't, from a professional standpoint, have any objection to making the adjustment that Plan Commission member Miller is suggesting be made. Modification, it's, it's essentially kind of a technical correction, you could say, or clear, technical clarification. I don't think it's really going to have any meaningful change on how things actually operate in a practical manner onsite on a regular basis.
Okay, well, is, is it all right then if I make a motion to amend the motion to reflect 18 spaces and two parallel spaces to replace the four angled spaces on that property?
Okay, that, I will take that as a motion. Do we have a second? Going one?
Second, this is Alderman Berry.
Okay, there we go. We have a motion and a second on amendment to the motion. Does everyone understand what that amendment is? Nod your head, please. Okay?
Alderman Davalos, yeah, I don't quite, you know, I, I didn't get this memo today, or didn't have a chance to read it, I guess, from the membership, so I'm a little caught off guard here. And that's why I'm just, I, I guess Economic and Community Director Menser did, did clarify that. I'm not sure what effect, maybe what he's saying it won't have any effect, but if that's the case, why are we doing it? I, I don't know, I'm just a little befuddled, but we can continue on and I'll probably figure out as we go.
Okay, I think Director Menser did indicate that this would probably not affect the operation of the business. Is that correct, Ron?
That's, that's correct. I mean, actually, what the, the modification that's being suggested and considered at this point in time is actually requiring two less parking spaces on the property than what the applicant indicated they could provide if they had the angled parking in the front. From a practical perspective, people don't park in an angled form in the front, so from a practical perspective or a technical perspective, you know, the, the most spaces that they do have onsite is 18, and essentially that's what the city would be granting a variance for. I mean, the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance require 34 parking spaces, not including the seven display spaces for the businesses at this location. If you know the businesses at this location, one of them is a longtime locally-owned auto service business in the western part of the building, and under the parking regulations, they would have to have 14 parking spaces. I can't imagine them. I, I've never seen them even have maybe half of that parking need, so I think our, our parking regulations are, are a bit overstated, especially in this kind of a condition, and I think the variance that is being, would be approved down to 18 spaces is reasonable, and I anticipate that we, it would create any new parking issues in this location.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Let's go through the Aldermen for comments then. We've got Alderman Goodman's comments. Go Alderman Chrisell.
Yeah, I, so I guess the angled parking, I'm, I'm assuming that these are not customer vehicles, these are display vehicles for, I mean, this is a, this is a, a car sales lot, right? I mean, this, they're, they're probably going to be putting cars there so they have Warrenville Road access, you're driving by, you see these vehicles. And the, you know, they'd only be taken off the lot if they were going to be taken for a test drive or something. It's not like cars are coming in and out of here four or five, 10 times a day like a normal business, right? So is that a good understanding of how this is laid out or no? Okay.
Ron, explanation, please?
Yeah. The display spaces, as it was proposed and recommended for approval by both staff and the Plan Commission, are seven spaces located on the west side of the building, kind of face, east side of the building facing kind of the town tap River Road corridor. They're stacked spaces for the most part. The spaces out in front along Warrenville Road are, are generally used by employees or delivery trucks. I see delivery trucks parking there that are making deliveries to the businesses, small delivery, not semi-trailers, but like, you know, box trucks. So my, my assumption is, is that that's how it would continue because they are somewhat difficult to get in and out of without driving over the curb, and it's a pretty substantial curb for an automobile, so people either typically weave in off of the drive on Warrenville Road to park in that area, or as it's currently proposed with the outdoor display of vehicles, they would circulate around the, the east side of those vehicles and, you know, just slide up front of the building and park. But they would be, in most cases, they would be parking in a 90-degree or parallel position. Now, if they wanted to jack- if they wanted to jockey around out there, they could probably get themselves angled in there on an angled manner, but I don't see that happening, just because I don't think there's going to be a parking constraint on property, on the property that would force them to do that.
Okay, so then follow-up question is then, by reducing this number of spaces, my understanding then from your comment is it doesn't reduce the amount of sales they could do because these would not be display vehicles, right?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, yeah, then I guess that makes sense to me. Then the amendment to the motion makes sense to me.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener.
Yeah, I think if it has the supposition that it's going to improve safety and it's not going to impact and harm the business in any way, I would agree with the amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Wilson.
I agree.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson.
Yeah, I wonder if we just take a second if Economic Director Mensah, I think it's Exhibit C back in the back that, that shows the four angled parking. That's the angle we're talking about, right?
Yeah, there's Exhibit C, it shows it like on a site plan. And then if you look at Exhibit B, it's a photograph where they've shown how they could angle park cars in there. But again, that, you know, to get them, that's like, in a perfect world, they really jockeyed them around to get them to fit in there like that. You don't see them parked out, I don't recall ever seeing them parked out there like that. And I drive by that site at least once a day.
Yep. Okay, you know, I think what I appreciated, the work of the committee that brought this forward, you know, I was kind of glad there's not, you know, there's not banners, there's not all sorts of other stuff that's permitted within the site. And so, you know, if we're, if you're comfortable with the new number of parking spots, then looks like this should be fine. My biggest concern was customers having a place to park because it looked like that would be tight. And parking along the road didn't seem like a great option. But it sounds like we believe there will be enough room for them to move, to park in the lot. No further comments.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Ashauer.
Is there any comments from the petitioner? Supposed to be at the meeting tonight?
Is the?
Hello?
Hello, petitioner, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, could you identify yourself, please, and then make your comments?
Yes, I'm the tenor. I have no comment.
Okay.
I'm fine.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry?
Yes, a question for Director Mensah. So if they take the four across the angled away, so then I'm on Exhibit C, so then there's, where are these other spaces then? Are they the, all the spaces that are shown there? Because I have more than eighteen spaces, or twenty, what do I have? There's like twenty-three spaces there, even if I remove the four.
Okay.
All those yellow.
If you remove, what the motion, the amended motion that Alderman Goodman is making would remove and replace the four angled spaces with essentially what happens on a regular basis is two parallel spaces. So you'd really only be subtracting two spaces from the front. But you also have to recall or remember that you're going to be subtracting the seven spaces just to the south of those currently drawn angled spaces. That's the space that will fill with cars that are on display. They won't be customer or employee parking spaces.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I'm fine with, with the amendment. Thank you.
Ron, just a quick question for me is that, what was the rationale of the Plan Commission approving the motion that we have in front of us tonight? Was there a particular advantage to the business with the way they approved it?
Honestly, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, but I, you know, from a practical perspective, I know that people don't park in an angled basis. So it wasn't something that staff stood up and, you know, said that you really shouldn't be doing that. So no, I can't really speak to, I didn't really understand why they didn't, they were reluctant to adjust the, the number down from twenty to eighteen.
Okay, but from your perspective, you see no deleterious effect to the business for this change?
No, no, it's actually, we're reducing the, technically, the number of required spaces onsite from twenty to eighteen. So it's actually gives them a little more flexibility, technically.
All right.
Since this attorney, attorney wanted to man, I just thought to add, it may be that the benefit for having the four spaces instead of two was to just reduce the extent of the variation that was being granted. So it was just, you know, maximizing how many spots it could get on the lot and therefore how many, you know, the, the percent decrease that you were reducing the required parking. So that may have been the rationale.
Okay, thank you for that comment. Any additional comments from any of the Alderman before we vote on the amendment to the motion? Hearing none. We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
And Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries to amend the original motion. And now we're back to voting on the original motion as amended. Any additional comments from anyone? I'm going to assume at this point that everyone's been heard. Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, and thank you all for your discussion. We'll move on then to the regular agenda. We have two items. If someone would like to make the motion for item seven A, please.
It's Alderman Goodman. I'd like to make the motion to accept Mayor Bremmell's recommendation and approve the appointment of Alderman Widener to serve as the City Council liaison to the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Awareness Commission.
Second, Alderman Wilson.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We'll just go through the Alderman quickly. Alderman Anderson?
No discussion.
Thank you. Alderman Ashauer.
No discussion.
Thank you. Alderman Berry.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos.
Yeah, I would just like to thank Alderman Widener. And also, just, just one thing is that I took the time to read the resumes of the people on this commission and what's happening here. And I was just very impressed. It's full of a lot of different kind of people from all sorts of areas of our town with different experiences, different age groups. I just was thrilled that this has come to fruition. And it seems to have, I'm looking really ahead with anticipation of what they're going to be doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
I would agree with that. And I would second the thanks to Alderman Widener, both for serving in this role and I think for coming up with the idea in the first place. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kreschel?
No comments.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
Yeah, thanks for the words of appreciation. I'm honored to be part of this group and look forward to helping the group move forward its visions, its mission, and its objectives to get things done. As I said in my other comments, I think this is a really timely piece of, or timely group to assemble. We need it now more than ever. So I'm pleased to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. And Alderman Wilson?
I approve it and move the question.
Very good. I would also add that Alderman Widener, his suggestion was the impetus for forming this commission. So I thank him for that. He also served on the task force that set, set the ground rules for the formation of the commission. So he's already served twice in getting the same opportunity. And I really appreciate the fact that he's willing to stick with it and put his hard work into making a success. So thank you, Alderman Widener. May I have a roll call then, please?
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Anderson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item seven B is a discussion of financial update. And again, the staff has provided a very easy to understand synopsis of what's going on financially, not particularly somewhat encouraging, I guess, on some levels. So we'll begin with comments from Administrator Coakley and then see if our Finance Director Dollstrand has anything to add.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. And just to remind, council's been through this many times, but anyone else who may be listening or watched the replay of the meeting, this is the report, and this memo was about the market volatile revenues that we have that are more affected by the pandemic and the recession or the economic turbulence. I'm not sure what it's called. It's not good that we've encountered. So it's reflecting not the entire status of the city where we are financially. That's a different report, and you'll be getting more information as budget goes along. But it's an indicator of the benchmark revenues, again, that really fluctuate with market changes. And anyway, it is, each month, it has been a little bit, a little bit less bad than the month before. It's not a good situation. We're talking about how much less we may be projecting to lose to the end of the year. We certainly will not, we certainly would be able to continue through the whole year. I don't want to make a super dire warning. We're not shutting out the lights, but it is a struggle. And this is the report that we're working on, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, looking at what we're doing for this year. But Finance Director Dollstrand, who's going to comment in a minute, and I are working, he is working diligently, I'm working with him to try to project revenues for next year. Just a few other comments on fiscal issues, a little bit beyond this memo. He and I will be meeting with the, what was the Fund Balance Work Group, we're now calling the Long Range Financial Planning Effort with Alderman Goodman and Wilson. I believe it's next Friday, a week from this Friday, to talk about some bigger issues. They will provide us some assistance, sounding boards, input with all the data that we do have about next year and financial issues. But I want to give a little, those comments are to give a little bit more broader, a little broader context to the memo you have before you. And we'll happy, I'll turn it over to Kevin, then we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Before we do that, just that you mentioned that this is the more volatile section of our revenue stream.
Yes.
Can you give an idea to folks what percentage of our revenue this volatile section is? Is it half of our revenue? Is it a third? Is it a quarter? That would give us a context to understand how much we can depend on and how much is in jeopardy.
Oh, number one, it's, it goes across several different funds. So we'd have to look at it. We should look at it fund by fund. And then I'm going to demonstrate my management skill and delegate that question to our Finance Director. See if he can ballpark, Kevin.
I think that's all I'm looking for is a ballpark, just to give some people an idea of what we're talking about here. So Financial Director, Finance Director Dollstrand, Kevin, are you here?
Sure. So we're going to make it a fairly big ballpark. I'm going to say that it's about a third of the revenue in the general fund, specifically in the hotel tax fund, it's obviously almost a hundred percent of that revenue because it only, it only has one source in that fund. So all of the revenue within that source has affected the motor fuel tax fund, which we also report on, that only has one source as well, that comes from the state. So we're reporting on virtually one hundred percent of the revenue in that fund as well. And the other fund we reported is the capital maintenance and replacement fund. This is probably about a third to a half of that revenue. The largest piece in there has always been the amusement tax, or for a very long time anyway, along with telecom tax. But the amusement tax has been a large piece, and that's the revenue, market based revenue that's sustaining the largest loss within that fund at this point. Overall, from month to month, from our December update to the update this month, it's a virtual non-change across all funds. There's only about, about a fifteen thousand dollar improvement across all funds. So we're kind of where we were about a month ago. And, you know, it's still a little bit, bit of an improvement, but fifteen thousand dollars on one point nine million of projected low loss that we had in December is not a whole lot of improvement, but we'll take any improvement we can at this point.
Okay, back to Administrator Coakley.
Thank you. I would add a couple other quick things, too. As a reminder, we had increased costs this year because of COVID and the pandemic. We were able to offset those to the amount of six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars from CARES Act funding coming from the federal government through the county. That has certainly helped, it will help the total bottom line for this year. Again, not necessarily, it's noted in this memo, but it's not, this isn't a balance sheet where we're seeing the revenues and expense and the net effect. But that's certainly helped this year. And I would remind everyone and draw everyone's attention to the last page, again, with the reductions that were put into this year's budget. All of this happened so quickly as the budget was just about to be adopted, as you recall, the council will, that we couldn't make the changes in time to get the budget adopted according to the statutory requirements. So the direction was the staff and the commitment was from staff that we would cut things and make recommendations and changes. And you see all those on the back page. There were things that were delayed, things that were reduced, things that were removed from this year's expenses. It certainly helped in the bigger fiscal picture. That will be reflected more when we get to the budget process that we're rolling out for the council, when you see the rejected year-end net effects. But I didn't want everybody to forget those things, too. We're talking about volatile revenues here, but there are a lot of other things that make up our fiscal picture. And we're working hard to keep on top of those and will be going forward for the next year. Thank you.
Thank you, John, Kevin. And that was my point, I guess, is to reassure folks that it's not that all of our revenues are in jeopardy. Some are quite stable. The ones that we concentrate on are the ones where there is volatility, and that's why there's the update to the council constantly on that volatility. So rest assured that we're not in a position of going broke. We are having to tighten the belt as much as we can, which we are doing. Some of our revenues, roughly two-thirds of them are fairly stable. We know that money's coming no matter what. The rest is going to come back at some point, hopefully sooner than later. But that's kind of the picture as we see it right now. So we'll go to Alderman for comments or questions, beginning with Alderman Anderson.
No comments or questions.
Thank you. Alderman Ashauer.
Thanks for the report and the good news and the bad news.
Thank you. Alderman Berry.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Davalos.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Goodman.
Overall, this is pretty similar to the last time we discussed this. The motor fuel tax seems to be a bright spot. I guess my big blanket question for staff is, given that we've had so much of the year now to analyze at this point, what should we be the most worried about?
Okay, we'll begin with City District Attorney Coakley. Your biggest concern?
My biggest concern off the, at this point, I'll have more, I'm going to qualify it first. I'll have a better picture of everything in a net effect in a few weeks. We're gathering all information from budget. But as we sit tonight, as you asked that question, my biggest concern is really in the hotel tax fund. And we're going to have to work very hard. That's going to be some of the discussion we have at that meeting that you and Alderman Wilson will be part of. We've got to think about recommendations. This one will be settled at that meeting about all the things that are funded out of that. While that is not, it's not the largest part of our city revenues. It does support community events. It supports tourism and travel. It supports tourism and travel. It supports many, many activities worthy causes across the community, small and large, and it also helps to provide interfund transfers to some of our other funds. So, again, while it's not the largest portion of our revenue by any means, it is, it's got, it's attached to many different activities and supports sometimes the general fund, the Capital Maintenance Replacement Fund, it has been used in other places. So that's my biggest concern, just because of the broad effect that it can have, because it's really been impacted. Business travel until business travel returns and our hotels can return to some new normalcy, that the fund is going to struggle. The hotels, obviously, without business travel, they're really hurting, because they're missing the mainstay of their customers.
As I recall from the report, we're down about 70% in that particular aspect of our revenue.
Yes.
Thank you. Finance Director Dollstrand, anything to add?
No, I would concur on the hotel tax as well. I do believe that that is one of those things that is extremely important for what it does for other funds and for the ability to do community events as well. At the time, we really need community events, and when we'll need them, when we come out of this, it's going to be a struggle a little bit to do that. I'm also concerned with the amusement tax, the fact that we have really one very large entity that helped pay with that tax, and the ability of that fund then to maintain itself for the Capital Maintenance Replacement of the infrastructure structure we have throughout the community. That fund has been having a little bit of issues for a number of years, and it's been exacerbated by this large drain on the amusement tax, and that's why we've been reviewing the CMRP. It's going to be a significant impact on that fund. Any money that's lost in that fund at this point is a significant impact as the telecom tax within that fund has been declining revenue for a number of years now. So those are my specific areas of concern. The other area of concern I have is kind of the area we don't, that's not as visible to see the smaller pieces of, but the overall effect of the closure of restaurants on sales taxes and some of the local home rule taxes as well. It's a little harder to see those, because you can't pull those pieces out of the numbers themselves. But that's a significant impact on our loss. You know, you have other entities that are performing relatively well, such as Target and Walgreens, who, you know, perform well through all this, but you've lost the majority of the restaurants how they were performing before. So that's an area of concern I have as well, because you can't see that as easily. And there's reasons for, and there's confidentiality, which is why we can't call it specific businesses, but I do know that that's a large component of our sales tax, and I'm extremely concerned about those pieces.
Thank you, Kevin. Senator Mr. Cokely, additional comment?
Yes, thank you. I was just going to touch on what Kevin just mentioned, our restaurants, restaurants and bars, and even gas stations. They, the gas stations are doing pretty well, and the new one opening really helped. Some of our restaurant and bar revenues come from restaurant and bar tax, sales tax on other food. There's a number of different revenues that are contributed from those, and most, as you know, they're doing some takeout. They're, seem to be keeping afloat. I'm happy that that's happening, but I know they're struggling, because they can't have all the capacity that they should have. It's just not the same at all for them without people in the actual restaurants. Hopefully, that will be back soon, in-person dining, so the people can be there, they can tip their waitstaff, they can pay their bills, they can all employ all those folks. Those are some of the secondary concerns I certainly had, too, because collectively, they provide a lot of revenue to the city. Lastly, Christina, thank you, had just handed me a note as a reminder. If you go to the Fiscal Year 21 Budget booklet on page 40 of the budget on the website or in the booklet, does show a pie chart that shows the breakout of revenues, as they normally would be, with the fluctuations in them. All the proportions would be a little different. But it gives a breakdown of what, with the mayor's question earlier on, would show you in a static environment, what proportion sales tax makes up versus property taxes, et cetera. So that may be helpful for anyone who really wants to dig into those numbers and, and kind of get some more information. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Back to you, Alderman Goodman. Was that, that factory?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that helps us get our heads around this a little bit. It is, it is very useful to see the graphs and to see how this has changed over time, and there are certainly some bright spots here. You know, I'm a lot more concerned about the people who are dying than I'm concerned about us not getting a little bit of sales tax revenue, but we still need to do our job and keep track of the sales tax revenue. Thank you for your update.
Thank you. Alderman Kreschel?
Thanks. Just two comments. I remember when I first read this report back when I first started seeing these in, I don't know, or the summer sometime, I remember saying to myself, things I won't repeat here, but, you know, it's, as Administrator Cokely said, it's less bad. So, you know, one day at a time, keep moving forward. It's good to see slight improvements, you know, as slight as they are. The other thing that I was thinking when I was reading this is looking at the last page here and thinking of all the creative ways that, you know, we've addressed advantages and come up with different ways to kind of, you know, stay the course. I'm hoping that, you know, with the good news of today, of possibly moving into a tier-two mitigation, you know, as we come out of this on the other side, we exercise the same level of creativity and forward-thinking to think of new ways to increase these revenues as we need to catch up. And as we go into the budget season here in the next couple of months, it should be an interesting time. So, looking forward to it.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener?
Thank you. I just hope that there's communications established with some of the event sponsors that could be affected by the reduction in hotel and motel tax dollars. I know they begin planning their events a long time in advance of actually presenting them, and with the new reality, if they're going to be reduced in the amount of support that the city gives them to host their special events, we may want to just put them on notice and let them know that it could be a couple lean years until we build back up. And also, I would agree that investigating new revenue opportunities might be worthwhile. I don't know, I don't have any ideas off the top of my head, but perhaps a group of staff or council members could be assembled to investigate potential for, for new revenues that might help offset some of the losses we've experienced. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
I can just say I'm looking forward to this next meeting that we will be having in the next week or so. There are a lot of figures that we need to look at, and there's not a potential that's still there. We have to remember where we were at the best days, and they are still ahead of us. So keep your chin up, and we'll be working on it. And let's hope and pray that we will be able to get out of this the same way we went into it. So, and based upon that, thank you for all the comments and information that we've gotten tonight.
Thank you, Alderman. A good way to end up. All right, everyone's been heard from on that issue.
This is Alderman Berry. I have, can I make one comment? I'm sorry. Thank you. We had our final meeting at the Tourism and Arts Commission the other night, and I did inform the commission that when they make their presentation, which will be at the beginning of February, that the City Council might not approve all the dollars which they're asking for. And so they are well aware of the situation at the ti, at this time. So I just wanted to let all the aldermen know, there are, there are, all the people that have given us proposals before have given us proposals again. So if the aldermen would like to kind of think about in the next several weeks what they think the number should be, I know that we were authorized to use up to $100,000, but if that's not possible, that is something that the aldermen need to, like I said, think about in the next few weeks and have that discussion when Tourism and Arts comes forward at the Finance Committee as a whole meeting for their discussion. Okay?
This is Alderman Goodman. Just to quickly interject, we just approved the Finance Committee agenda. It will be on that agenda, which is one week from today.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Chief Toriano?
Thank you, Mayor. One thing, maybe to add a little bit of bright light on this, while it doesn't have to do with finances, I have been in meetings as the president of the DuPage County Chiefs Association with the DuPage County Health Department. We, meaning that the tier group of 1B, which will include police officers and educators, teachers, should be receiving information about getting our vaccinations for COVID if we choose to take them within the next week or so, and we're hoping to have those administered the first two weeks of February. And I think that's important to know that the Health Department is also including, with guidelines from the state, lowering the age from individuals 75 years of age to 65 years of age. And additionally, if there are people with significant pre-existing conditions, may also be able to receive this vaccine. And I say this because the more people that are able to become vaccinated is going to reduce the number of targets that this virus has to attack. And from a, just a personal standpoint, having lost my sister to this within a period of, you know, eight to 10 days, and she was a healthcare professional, she was a nurse for over 35 years, a very smart woman. And it was just devastating to see this virus. So that, even if you do become vaccinated, please do not discount the, the important factors of the social distancing, the washing your hands, wearing a mask, being careful when you're out there amongst other people. But hopefully, the bright spot ahead is that we're going to get this vaccine rolled out quicker, and the more people, again, that are immunized, the quicker that we're going to reduce the spread of this. And I would think conversely, we're going to move into tier-one mitigation and hopefully go back to business as normal. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the comments, Chief, and very sorry about your sister. And also, just a final comment for me, that I am, attend all the meetings for the Fourth of July group, and so I'm in contact with them, and we're working on what the potential is for this coming Fourth of July as we speak. You may not be aware, but as Alderman Widener alluded to, these committees that get these events for us work pretty much year-round on making them happen. They don't start the week before the Fourth of July to worry about it. They have, have meetings once a month throughout the year. So I am part of that group, and we are certainly hoping to do something again this year, but we'll certainly work with staff to come up with a workable alternative. Anyone else with an additional comment before we close out?
Yes. I just want to express my condolences to the chief regarding the loss that he experienced. So, sorry.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, we have nothing under unfinished business. We have no new business listed. We have no need for a closed session tonight, so I do need, however, one additional motion before we can go home. Hint, hint?
Alderman Davalos, I move to adjourn.
Alderman Ashauer, second.
Very good. Well done. Thank you. Motion and a second. Roll call, please. Alderman Anderson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
That's it? We're done. Thank you so much. Thank you for your attendance and your attention this evening. Please stay healthy and stay safe.
Thank you, Mayor.
Night, all.
Thank you.
Bye.